Call me, in order. Go please rise. And ask you to join me in a moment of reflection on a business that's before us this evening. Please join me to pledge allegiance.
On our pledge of allegiance, we define the United States of America and its liberty and our freedoms, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, please take your role.
Alderman Bassow.
Here.
Alderman Begley.
Here.
Alderman Violet.
Here.
Alderman Clifford.
Here.
Alderman Lewdowski.
Here.
Alderman Key.
Here.
Alderman McGovern.
Here.
Alderman McGrogan. Mayor, City Clerk, Treasurer, Attorney are all present.
All right, no special presentations tonight. Under the consent calendar, we got the approval of amendments of the city council meeting from September 6th, 2022, along with the approval of the payroll and the voucher list for the period ending September 9th, 2022. Need a motion to approve said.
I'll make that motion.
Move Alderman McGovern, second by Alderman Violet. Discussion, roll call.
Alderman Lewdowski.
Aye.
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
Alderman Begley.
Yes.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Alderman Bassow.
Aye.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, no sealed bids tonight?
No bids.
Okay. Under my report, just a quick remark. Before this meeting, we had a committee of the whole dealing with the redistricting of the wards. Given the fact that under the 2020 census, we had a shift in population of about 500 people out of the second ward, primarily, I believe, because of, certainly Christian College or students were not in class because of COVID, so we lost some students there. So, we're looking at the possibilities of redistricting the ward maps to reflect the new geographic distribution. So, we had a short meeting this afternoon, and we'll get some more information going forward and get back for a final approval. Other than that, that's all I have. City Clerk?
No report.
City Treasurer?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have the treasurer's report for the month ending August 31st. The general fund began August with $5,464,084. Revenues for August were $830,030. Expenses from the general fund were $871,215. Other source used $6,162, giving an ending cash balance in the general fund of $5,429,61. The total of all city funds began August with $23,020,876. Revenues totaled $1,666,187. Expenses for the month were $1,503,625. Other source used $19,163, giving an ending cash balance in all city funds of $23,164,274. That concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
All right, with that, entertain a motion to approve the treasurer's report.
So moved.
Move Alderman Violet.
Second.
Second by Alderman Clifford. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed, motion carries. City Attorney?
No report.
Communications, anyone have, see anything? Citizens wishing to address council? Gentlemen, back first. Your name and address, please.
My name is Bob Grossard. I'm a citizen of Palisades Heights. I live at 12904 Golf Field Lane since 1983, and I also was chairman of the Business Economic Advisory Committee from 2010 to 2021. And I'm here to talk about a topic that you're gonna consider a little later in the evening. I did send a letter to all of the aldermen, the mayor, and the city administrator, and some suggestions to alleviate some concerns for the residents, and as a public record, I think that's included in the public record if they want to look at it. But I'd just like to go through a brief presentation to share my thoughts on what you're gonna vote on tonight. Welcome to the Palisades Business District. In five minutes and 50 feet, these are three signs that were up on the businesses. One is nice enough to tell you that they're only gonna charge, I think it's $216 to get your car back, you gotta go to 44th and Archer, and you can either pay by cash or your credit card. So I think it's thoughtful of them that they at least tell you how you can get your car back. But this is what represents in Palisades Business District. How do you think people feel when they go and see this stuff? Would you go shopping there on a regular basis? I think not. Anyway, this is the way we're currently presenting the business district, and this is just three signs. I could've taken 50. I just stopped at three. Let's talk about the role of the alderman. Why are you here? I recognize you're elected, and it's a very tough job because you're trying to appease a lot of people, but you're really trying to represent the interests of over 12,000 people, taxpayers, mind you, and you're also here to represent over 300 businesses, taxpayers, mind you, and different plans get approved along the way. In 2019, unanimously, six of the eight of you voted for the comprehensive plan. And to me, once the plan is approved and in place, your role really changes from talking about what you'd like to do to following what the plan said you should do, because you authorized it, you voted for it, and that should be your basis for making your decisions. Let's talk about the comprehensive plan. As I mentioned, it was approved on September 9th, 2019. You used taxpayers' dollars in excess of $40,000, and you hired a professional city planning company to develop that plan. Why'd you do that? Well, if you look at the makeup of the aldermen, some are schoolteachers, some are policemen, all different skills. None of you are city planners. That's why you hire a professional firm. And you did that for $40,000. I think it was a good decision if you used the plan. Then we talk about the steering committee. There was nine people on the steering committee. I'll just give you two examples. Chuck Polcaster. He actually is a doctor. He's got three business locations around Chicago, one in Palisades Heights. He was on the board of directors of the hospital, and he was also on the Business Economic Advisory Committee, and he agreed to be on the steering committee to listen to about what do people really want? How do you work the stuff and read it? Sending out copies. There was public hearings. All the aldermen had copies of this report and had a chance to give their input of, do you like it? Don't you like it? What do you want to change? That's the time for the debate, not tonight. That was the time for the debate. So to me, this is your plan paid for by me, so that's why I'm here tonight. Now, let's talk about the plan. You could say, well, parking maybe wasn't addressed in it. Well, there's a passout on your desk from page 47, which, if you look at the wording, it's almost identical to what you're gonna vote on tonight, word for word. So what's the difference between the plan you voted on on page 47 and what you're voting on tonight? Maybe it was just a sneak preview. Page 21 talks about parking. Page 19 talks about parking. You had a chance to use the comprehensive plan a few years ago when there was a major dispute between what should go in the corner of College Drive there between, on the gateway proposal and the gas station. You didn't support that either. Why is that? Because really, I don't think the city has a vision or a plan or executes. We were told after getting 40-some people at that meeting to say, well, I guess something is better than nothing. I hope we can do better than that tonight. What about your views as an alderman? Okay, when the plan was proposed, that was the time you should be debating about what you want to do with parking, not tonight. That's when we asked for your opinion, not tonight. And after the plan's approved, I think your role changes. Now you're implementing the plan, not deciding what you want to do with parking. And what do you do if you don't agree with the plan? Well, then I need you thinking to come up with an alternative and get a majority of the aldermen to agree to it. And it also says, what about the new alderman? You're here, new, fresh insights, that's great, but I think you have to go back and do the same step. If you really don't agree with what's in place, you can't just say, well, I'm starting fresh and everything's new, just like when you became a lawyer. You didn't change all the law, you had to take what was there, and if you didn't like it, try to change it, right? Same thing here. These plans were in place, and if you don't like it, you try to get the plan amended. You don't just say, I'm not gonna vote for it. So I think you have a right to vote for this tonight, too. What about concerned residents? Hey, I'm all for that, and I think if there's concerned residents, we should work hard to try to alleviate their concern. But guess what? There's a twin right across the street of what we're trying to do tonight in the Franklin Public House parking lot. There's been no problems, none, and, you know, Mike would probably tell you that if you asked him. And you could've documented, I gave you in my memo, five steps you could've done in 10 hours if you really wanted to get back to the concerned citizens to say, there really is no problem. I don't believe you did that. So what's the difference? Concerns does not mean that's a fact. It means it's a concern. There's a different wording if you look up in the dictionary. Less than 10 people have expressed concerns, but nobody wants to talk about the facts. Why don't you compare what you're doing to Franklin Public House parking and say, what really is the difference? Have they had problems? No. Why do you want to vote one way on one side of the street and one way on the other side of the street? I don't understand that personally. So your devote, your vote tonight, well, the debate is not what to do about fixing parking because you already decided. Tonight is your voting to adopt that plan. And parking has been an issue for more than 10 years. I started on the Business Economic Advisory Committee in 2010. Guess what the first topic we talked about? Parking. That's strange, and now we're in 2022, and what are we talking about tonight? Parking. Is that fair to the businesses that are trying to survive in this community? I don't think so. So you could get, tonight you're gonna say yes, or you're gonna say no? I don't know how you're gonna vote, but really, when you're voting no, do you have an alternative plan that you're ready to publish? Or are you just voting no and say, well, year 11 or 12, we'll get around to it, maybe we can fix it then? And then I ask you another question. What about future growth? As new businesses come to Palisades Heights, do we tell them, hey, you gotta promise not to be successful because we got a parking problem here we wanna deal with, so if you require a lot of parking, go somewhere else? Is that what we're gonna tell them? I hope not. So tonight, we're gonna find out. Are you really part of the problem, or are you part of the solution? And my definition is, if you vote yes, I think you're part of the solution. Personally, if you vote no, I think you're part of the problem. And you either get to vote one way or the other, and it's a choice by you. So my hope is, let's work together and make a difference and make Palisades a better community. Thank you very much.
Mark Zilek, 12252 South Herald Avenue. I'd like to touch on what was just said, basically in the same words, but in a different form. It is inevitable that every community at some point must address and act on growth and development within the community, while taking into account public safety first and foremost. A failure to do so could be perceived as a form of negligence in regard to public safety itself. This matter, if not effectively addressed, will only continue to hinder the community and potentially pose far greater burdens and liabilities for the residents, businesses, and community as a whole than any of the public concerns presented to date. As a resident of Palisades, I've watched as this community has acted and evolved modestly, with great respect and consideration for its character and charm. As residents, we elect and entrust you, our public officials, to lead and act on our behalf, especially when we ourselves cannot come together as a community and effectively do so. All too often, we take for granted and overlook the political sacrifices you, our elected officials, make while engaging these issues, while you carefully weigh the pros and cons of each matter presented for consideration. Growth, development, and change is not always easy, and is, excuse me, and is too often faced with partisanship or hindering criticism affecting its outcome, no matter what it pertains to. However, no reasonable person can dispute that without sacrifice, there is no reward. In order to accomplish anything in life, sacrifices are required. Balancing the pros and cons to carefully consider whether the rewards outweigh the sacrifices is imperative. Throughout these proceedings, one question was repeatedly asked, would you want to live next to a parking lot? Ironically, that question has been asked and supported by the majority of those that already, in fact, live in the vicinity of parking lots in the business district. In my personal and professional opinion, that very question has repeatedly overshadowed the ability to reasonably and effectively consider the pros in the public eye by placing all too much focus, attention, and emphasis on the cons. I would like to take this moment to formally answer that question, which was also presented to me at the initial zoning committee hearing, however, in its correct context. I, if I personally made the conscious decision to purchase a home near or around a business district, I would absolutely welcome any and all change that approved upon infrastructure, improved upon public safety for all, and most importantly, if the pros outweigh the cons. A lack of adequate parking is not only a burden for the businesses, but for the residents itself. Palisades is not unique to this issue. It makes the year-run events that take place within the city challenging for all. This is, in fact, the true public safety issue and burden upon us today. Our beloved farmer's market is one example. Where do those patrons park? The market occupies the entire, the entire current municipal lot, does it not? Are those patrons not infringing upon hindering, not infringing upon and hindering the neighboring businesses and the residents when they attend, when they attend the market? I encourage this council to make its decision, as you've been elected and trusted to do so, on behalf of all of Palisades, based upon the pros and cons, not just the cons, while taking into account the growth within, within the city, its wonderful events, thriving businesses, and the need to adapt, which has brought us here tonight. Public safety should take precedence in that decision and this matter. As a resident, I'm proud to call Palisades home. I trust this council will make the correct decision, while not only preserving the community's character and charm, but adding to it. That is, that is why emphasis should be placed upon why a parking lot should be wanted as well as needed. It takes courage, trust, and a desire to adapt to change, and overcome criticism with hard truth, to continue to move forward in a positive direction. Thank you.
Let's just go down. Anybody else in this first row here? Second row, here.
Harlem White, 7640 West 135th Street. Mr. Brown, I was looking forward to you being here this evening. As he, the man just mentioned, he talked about a plan. You know, nine years, nine years, because of a poor plan, my yard continues to flood. And this plan was developed by the city of Palisades and the city of Palisades engineer. Nobody from the city of Palisades has once said to me, is there anything we could, how can we, that it was our fault? We'll take care of this, we'll do something. But ironically, ironically, you don't have a copy of this because it wasn't given to you by the city administrator who asked, since you asked for copies of everything, Mr. Brown. This was given to me by Cook County. Sad that I have to, you know, have two high schools, two grammar schools, then we have to have, I have to deal with the county, I have to deal with the city, and then I live in Orchard Park, but I gotta live in Palisades Heights. It's becoming a pain in the, whatever. But anyways, Cook County, on behalf of me, emailed the city of Palisades to find out what's going on, right? Question, from Cook County to the city of Palisades, did the city approve the builder of 7628 West 135th Street, leaving all of the fill from their excavation of a 10-foot basement? Answer from the city. Now, that's all, you know, the city never ever said anything to me. This is finally, I'm finally getting the city to talk to somebody else, but not the person who has the problem. The answer from the city was, the top of the finished floor of the now, the new house needed to be a minimum of six inches above the top of the road, which is a 679.77. Top of finished floor was set to 780.30, and the grade around the property was set to 679.77, which is over two and a half feet higher than the existing grade. So they raised the property which is east of me, which is downhill to me, two and a half feet higher. Okay, this is the answer the city of Palisades gave to the county. Question from the county, again, was the assumption made that the property would go to, the property drainage would go to the county ditch and drain east? And city answered. City never answered me, but they answered the county. Morris Engineering approved the proposed final grading plan as a city engineer, and they will need to answer the assumption question. So another question from the county, again, they asked the same question. Was this approval the cause of the drainage issue? Answer from the city of Palisades. Prior to the construction of the new house at 7628 West 135th Street, the empty field collected water from the western property, which was me, 1740. The empty field was one foot lower from, than the 7640 West 135th Street property. Half of the empty field appeared to flow towards 135th Street ditch, and the other half flowed northeast. Thus, nobody ever complained. Question from the county to the city of Palisades, again, another question that I've been asking for nine years. Nine years, never got an answer. Did the city assume that the 7640 property would go into the county ditch and drain east? Same question, yeah, the county asked it over and over. City answered, since the grade around the development is now higher, the design engineer created swales to drain the newly developed property to the northeast and to the south. The new drainage pattern reflects existing conditions. Unfortunately, that is, that is so false, it's not even funny. The property doesn't have anything that the city says it has. Unfortunately, it doesn't have the correct conditions, but that's another point. And the last question, again from the county, again, was, was the assumption made that the property would go to the county ditch and drain east? Answer from the city of Palisades to the county, not to Harlem White, to the county. Any new development will reroute the flow of water, but the existing flow pattern should still be maintained. So in theory, Mr. Brown, the city is the one that was responsible for my drainage problems. The city is the one that says that the pattern should be maintained, my pattern flow should be maintained. So my yard should not be flooding. So why am I out $7,200? Why did I have to put drain tile in my yard? Why did I have to put new rocks, new asphalt, I mean, new stones? Why did I have to dig, dig a swell when my property was supposed to be maintained as the way it was because I was there first? Now, you don't have a copy of that. If you want me to give, give me your email address, I will send you a copy of what the county asked and, and answered. Now, on another note, since we have a lot of residents here from the city of Palisades, does anybody know how much we're supposed to be paying for garbage?
It's on the city website.
Well, because we got $150 surcharge on our last bill, now we got $142 fuel surge on this one. Our last one was $500 for a quarter, and this one is just under $500, but?
$480 some.
$480 some. That sounds like a lot of money for garbage for residential.
I would take it up with Republic, they build you.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate that.
Well, that's who builds you.
That's kind of what everybody else has been asking me the last nine years, too, Mayor.
Miss, let's go back, yes, sir. Sure, yeah, please.
Benjamin Sheffley, I live at 77th West 123rd Place, Palisades Heights. When I moved here, when I bought a house here 30 years ago, the whissy-wake component was very important to me. Whissy-wake just stands for what you see is what you get. And this town had solid zoning, it had school system, the infrastructure, history of taxation, a whole bunch of things that were in place were clear, and you could see it was in a certain direction and going that way. And a very, very wise decision I made. I bought here and have been here. I also believe strongly in what General Eisenhower said, that he didn't believe very much at all, had very little faith in plans, but had a heck of a lot of faith in the planning process. I agree with that, having been a solver of complex problems for 30 years. I look at the corridor, the commercial corridor on Harlem Avenue, and it is, we don't have a planned economy in this town, fortunately. You look at that, and people complain about the fact that there are all these empty storefronts and things like that, and, you know, unused space. And people who don't complain about that are the owners. The owners have priced themselves out of the market for a lot of uses. I've talked, talked to a number of people who lost, left businesses on Harlem Avenue because the rents were too high. And the owners say, hey, you know, they priced themselves out of the market, they want to see some, you know, some real money on it. That's their call. These people aren't hurting, they know full well in the long run, they're gonna make out like gangbusters. They have, they know full well in the long run, their investment in that line is very good. Okay, so you have a company or a, say, a business that wants additional parking. I look all up and down the street of Harlem, there's tons of parking. But you gotta pay for it. If you want parking, you've gotta pay for it. And if you're a business and you want parking, there's plenty out there, and you can get it simply by renting it, leasing it, buying it, or moving. It's right there for you. And so, but there's another way, too. And that is sneak in, get some land that isn't commercial right now, get it rezoned, jump in on it, and you can have it for a song, because by that point, it's not worth much for anything else except if it's well organized for your parking. And even you think about the people who live around there, live around in the area of where this parking lot's gonna be. The backside of Harlem Avenue is very, businesses are very nicely delineated, carefully engineered, and has these two ways of driving. There's real demarcation between the business area and the residences. Well, if this variance goes through, then you have people who basically bought what they thought was gonna be a home, and now they're next to a parking lot. And parking lots are really obnoxious facilities. These people who bought knowing that they were near, you know, behind the business district, they knew that. They knew where it was, they looked at the pros and cons, they checked it, I'm sure they thought about it, is this okay? Yeah, they bought. Then the rules are changed. Suddenly, wait a minute, there's one next to me or across the street. That wasn't there when I bought. There was no hint that it would be there. But you get the sound pollution, you get the light pollution, you get the chemical pollution, you get the air pollution, you get the noise pollution, if I haven't mentioned it, it's worth mentioning twice, and you get the cars zooming in at late at night, zooming out in a residential area. Yeah, parking lots are remarkably obnoxious. To have a money interest, a small, single moneyed interest, kind of pervert the government, a local government, to be able to change the rules, I won't say it's un-American because, I mean, small moneyed interest, change government, get governments to change land use policies so that one benefits and a whole bunch of people lose, that's as American as apple pie. I just don't want to see it in this town. I think we stand to have a real loss here, because if you have that happen, you've also established a precedent. There is now no demarcation between whatever's going on in the business district and what those people bought nearby the business district, and I'm against it. Thank you.
Going down. Joan.
Joan DeVito, 12232 South 71st Avenue. At the March 14th, 2022, planning and zoning public hearing, a committee member asked if a parking lot study was done and what the result was. The result was, no additional parking was needed, the municipal lot was sufficient. I am asking that you vote no to this spot zoning change at 12303 South 71st Court. In addition to all the other comments and facts that have been presented for months, let's look at the residents, the logistics of the residents. Harlem Avenue to Ridgeland Avenue, 119th Street, Cal Sac, to 127th. In our area, my area where I live alone, we have two elementary schools, one high school, one college, four churches, a senior living facility, and a library. These main entrances are located in family home areas and around family homes, with the exception of the senior living facility. However, it has a left turn lane into my neighborhood. These roadways are used significantly and excessively throughout our neighborhood. Notably, 123rd Street running east and west is, for the most part, the main artery. The traffic is very heavy during early morning to mid-morning hours and mid-afternoon to mid-evening hours. Unfortunately, most drivers using these streets do not follow the speed limit and are driving recklessly, texting and not focusing on the task. Even though there are children walking to school, riding bikes, families walking about, my neighbors trying to enjoy the beautiful neighborhood, cars, delivery trucks, maintenance, landscaping vehicles are racing through. Oftentimes, I've witnessed no observance to the stop signs and speed limit signs on the streets, avenues, and courts. And now you want to add more traffic to our side streets. The lives of myself, my family, friends, and neighbors are in immediate danger. Numerous times, we've heard, well, you chose to live there, but we chose to live in a residentially zoned area with people respecting our neighborhood. I am asking that you vote no. Do not cause us to lose 10% to 15% of our home value due to a parking lot." Thank you.
Last rule? Yes, sir.
Hello again. Dr. Dan Nicholson. I'm a dad, teacher, professor, medical professional, brain researcher, resident, taxpayer, voter, and most of all, resident of the second ward. You know, it's a shame that the city council continues to make us voters, we parents, parade ourselves in public and say what we think about this idea. It's unanimously voted down from the residents, the voters, the moms, and the dads. In fact, everything I've said, I've said in public. I've even sent emails to some of you aldermen on here. Actually, my alderman, Jack Clifford, tracked me down, reported me to my employer for my opposition to this idea to try to get me fired.
That's a lie.
That should make everybody in this room shudder.
It's a lie.
I can send the email, sir.
I can send you a lot of emails, too, Mr. Know-It-All, that you accused me and other people in this place right at the beginning of this of being on the take... Taken bribes, insulting my integrity of my military service, saying I'm no better than Ho Chi Minh, and I find that insulting.
He said that to me. He said that to me. He said to...
You're a liar.
Calm down.
You've stretched the truth.
I contacted you via the city email.
You know what I asked? You know what I did? Let's get it straight. No. I asked, "Could you use company servers to spread your slanderous lies and deceit amongst there to get your word out?"
Sorry, you don't like my opinion, but I'm not a political dissident.
Yeah, well, I don't. You're not doing your cause any good. And don't ever insult me that way.
Then don't treat me like a political dissident.
Yeah, well, you started it.
Well, you started it.
There you go. Trying to get me fired.
Yeah, they don't take...
Over opposition to a parking lot. That's what we've come to, Mayor, over nine months. Will anybody stand up for the citizens? For me? My alderman attacking me? I just spent an hour with HR. Thank God, my employer understands that Alderman Clifford is an elected official. Stand with us.
I just wanted to know, why did you call me Ho Chi Minh?
I didn't call you Ho Chi Minh.
No, you didn't. I take it back. It wasn't Ho Chi Minh.
Anyway, I'm not done. So at this point, it's not clear who the alderman and the city council stands for. Is it the businesses or is it the residents? I don't really know. And at some point, the residents will figure it out. They'll vote, or they'll move. I urge you to vote no, but it's pretty clear at this point that it doesn't really matter what the residents say. Thank you.
All right. Go on. In the back, last... Yes, sir.
How you guys doing? Brian Grody, 12231 South 71st Court. I live right behind, as everyone knows, a rooftop bar. I've been at all the meetings, just haven't spoke. I ask that you vote no for the parking lot. I have a few opinions. I've listened to people say how the lot across the way was with Franklin's, there's no noise complaints, there's nothing. When I move behind a bar, I just assume there's going to be noise, there's going to be, you know, a lot of disruption. I didn't understand... I don't understand why the bar has their smoking area behind it and not out in front. So I never call. I could call every night, I have no complaint. In the summers, the fall, I haven't opened my windows, people talk to me, oh, great, all this stuff. I haven't opened it all year. I walk my kid, I just had another one the other day. We walk around the neighborhoods all the time. And I can tell you, other than a few events that people talked about, there's open spaces all over the place. And I know, I was... I had my house listed a year ago, and people reached out to my realtor from here, looking to potentially buy my house along with the lot next to me. And then I saw the purchase of the lot that you guys are talking about today, and it seems like when you get one approved, you're going to get the other two approved, you're going to try to get everybody out of that area because you talk about Charm and Payless, that two-block radius, you go down there. I didn't move here for that. I moved here for the schools, the location. My dad, you know, is sick, he lives in Okwann, I work in Orland. You know, it's a perfect location, it's a wonderful area walking around, I love it with my kids. And I just really don't see the purpose of it. Now, if you guys were to build all this parking behind it, yes, you're going to have developers probably come in, they're going to build these beautiful places, which is going to kill small business. I don't know if you guys know what the construction costs are on a new property for all new businesses, but you're going to have these small tenants that aren't going to be able to afford the rent like somebody had mentioned earlier because the cost is going to be too high. You're going to push out all small business. And I'm a small business... That's what makes our community grow, that's what makes the country grow. So I just vote... I just hope that you guys vote no to this. I just don't want to see anything in the residential area when it comes to parking. When I look around, every night when I walk, and there's open spaces, other than a couple days a year, that you guys have these events. So I hope that you guys consider all the residents have voted no, and please vote no for this. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Grody. Down back row, anyone else on this side?
Mike Coogan, resident and business owner, 22-year resident. This was an email I sent you guys yesterday. I'm publicly reading it. "Hello all, I'm here today to encourage all of you to vote in favor of approving the municipal parking lot at the corner of 123rd and 71st Court. As many of you know, I am a resident, as I said, 22 years of business owner in Payless Heights. I have been and hope to continue investing time, money, and efforts in improving buildings and/or bringing new businesses to our business district. I have been investing in Payless Heights long before this discussion, and opportunity came about to elongate the parking footprint in the downtown area. As well, I spent many hours as a guest and a member of the Business and Economic Development Committee. All of you have spent countless hours discussing, debating, and deciding on the direction of our town with approved plans over the years. These many plans were not without respectful discourse or debate. That is the nature of moving forward. Opinions are heard, discussions are had, and decisions are made, all to move forward with thoughtful growth, development, and/or otherwise. Whether it is a park, a recreation center project, a mixed-use building, or a senior living facility, the goal is to move our town forward. The overwhelmingly vetted and approved 2019 Comprehensive Plan is the guide for moving this town forward. This plan speaks to the issue of today..." I lost my spot, sorry. Specifically on page 34, it speaks to the bullet points in the commercial district, one being, quote, "Encourage the acquisition of park property within the overlay district to accommodate growing parking demands," unquote. This is a well-done, professional plan, and you as our valued council members who approve this plan should use this plan as it was intended. This plan has been and easily accessible for anyone who would like to view it on the city's website under 2019 Comprehensive Plan. If we are to retain, discuss, and attract quality businesses to our commercial district, the city needs to offer a centralized parking area. Two alternatives have been discussed, being street parking along 71st Court and a parking garage, one being intrusive to the 71st Court neighbors, and the other being too expensive to consider. The proposed parking lot is well-engineered, well-designed, and well-landscaped, and will benefit the whole of the business district. As the only other person in town who has developed a parking lot on 72nd Court in conjunction with the Payless Place Building, we have had and continue to have zero issues with our neighbors in almost six years, and actually, it's about eight years. I have absolute certainty that our city will well-maintain this parking lot. Centralized parking lots will move the commercial district forward as it was planned. As noted above, I have been involved with the progression of the Payless Heights business community for many years. I think our town is an absolute jewel of the South Suburbs. Our business district in the area of the jewel it's still polishing. The parking lot will be another step forward further in encouraging existing property owners, other business owners, and perhaps new investors or businesses to explore the potential of remodeling and/or locating here in our business district. Furthermore, and very importantly, it will serve to strengthen the businesses as a whole that are already here within the commercial district. I understand that a number of the neighbors are wholeheartedly against this parking lot, and they are certainly entitled to their opinions and concerns. This is the very nature of debate and discussions. In my opinion, the city has done well to address all of those concerns. Much of the disrespectful and loudest debate has been targeted at our mayor, yourselves, and to a smaller degree, myself, and none of it is constructive. It is largely corrosive in nature, and you must stand up for yourselves and on behalf of the city and not accept this manner of opinion. It is wholly unacceptable that thoughtfully planned progress is called out as backroom dealing and the like. This manner of accusatory and entirely false information should not be accepted or listened to. I would hope and trust that this corrosive banter and verbal bullying does not affect your ability to make the right decision for the benefit of our city and its business district. Respectfully, thank you."
I'm sorry, Mr. First Row. Anybody in the first row? Yes, yes, ma'am.
Good evening. My name is Kaitlyn Drother. Good evening. My name is Kaitlyn Drother, and I live at 12302 South 71st Avenue. For those of you who don't remember me from the last meeting, my property is directly east of the proposed parking lot at 12303 South 71st Court. I'd like to echo Mr. Coogan's statements in that there is no place for the aggression and hostility that we're seeing here today. I think that we can first and foremost agree that we are here because we all care deeply about Payless Heights and about its future. I believe that this uniting fact bears some reflection and just understanding from us all. In an effort to keep my topics germane to the parking lot and this proposal, I'd like to talk about a few important facts, and bear with me, I've heard a lot of interesting things tonight that I'm going to try and weave in here. The 2019 Comprehensive Plan has been brought up on both sides of this argument, both for and against. I would argue that the 2019 Plan, well, comprehensive in its name and nature, does bear some reconsideration as we had a global pandemic that affected all of us in the time since its inception. Our demographics have changed. Mayor Serraz, you noted that we're looking at redistricting as there's been some changes. I think there's a new demographic of residents in Payless Heights. Young families are moving here. People have, you know, left the city and moved into suburbs for various reasons, and that bears looking into. While the plan does outline additional considerations for off-street parking, including additional parking lots, I think there's a main point that we are not addressing here, and I actually have found it, it is on page 37. And it outlines that we need to encourage shared parking arrangements, something that I don't think has been properly explored to this point. Currently, there are over 300 parking spaces on the east side of Harlem that can and should be used by all businesses. I understand there are property ownership issues at the moment, but I urge the city council to follow the guidance of this Comprehensive Plan and start there. The council should be working with property owners to improve the infrastructure of these parking lots and have meaningful conversations about the shared space. The municipal lot that you are proposing will only add 30 spaces to this total of 300. It'll bring patrons away from the main street and pull foot traffic away from those existing businesses. The current municipal lot remains empty 90% of the week, and it's not even full during peak hours, as many of my neighbors have told you. It is my belief that the proposed municipal parking lot will only be a benefit to Capri Restaurant. The patrons will park in the proposed lot and walk directly to Capri without passing any of our equally important businesses that they should be passing by. Mr. Coogan made note of the Franklin's Public House lot, and that's exactly what happens. You park in the Franklin Public House lot, and you go directly to Franklin's. You don't visit any of those other businesses on that side of Harlem. An even more likely scenario is that the valet company that Capri utilizes will fill that parking lot with 30 cars before the public can even use the spaces. In that case, why are my tax dollars going to benefit a single private business? When considering the future of Payless Heights and commercial development, I believe it is also important to consider the investment that citizens make in their homes and what they bring to the community. Our concerns are valid and should have bearing on your decision as a council. I find it alarming that our valid issues that have been raised in conjunction with this parking lot have casually been reduced to simply fear-based thoughts. One of the earlier presentations mentioned that only 10 people talked about this. I think that's more of a reflection of, you know, how our community needs to get involved. And this is setting a precedent that you can't revoke. The sole reason we are told that this parking lot is needed is the fear that developers will walk away from our city based on only 30 parking spots. I'd like you to consider that in your vote. Thank you for your time.
Question. Anyone else on this side here? Back to the left side here. Everyone had a chance to talk? Okay. Yes.
I was asked... Let me reintroduce myself. Not only am I a resident of Payless Heights, I own and operate Premier Valet Systems. We are the valet parking operator...
Your name and address, please.
My name is Mark Zeolak, 12252 South Orland. I am a resident of Payless Heights as well as a business owner that operates within Payless Heights. I own the valet parking company that provides the service for Capri and Highlander House. Some of the things that you had mentioned in regard to shared spaces is a logistical nightmare. It is an absolute logistical nightmare because those properties, those spaces, are privately owned. I have been working in this city now for the past 17, 18 years providing valet parking. We have gone that route. There are constantly conflicts of interest, issues with times, there's a misperception of general public utilizing those spaces, and then it's... The blame is placed upon valet parking. You know, we've been working with this problem for 17, 18 years, trying to figure out the best solution. This is not the first time I've spoken on this matter or brought this to the attention of the city. So we operate respectfully within the city. We were told that the valet should use the municipal lot. Now, that's what we do. As growth came into the community, as businesses came in, we were pushed farther and farther out, and that's what we are currently doing. We are currently utilizing the current municipal lot, okay? So if a new lot were to come in, I have absolutely no objection to maintaining that standard or working with the city in whatever direction they want to go with in regard to valet parking to help and assist this problem. Our number-one priority is to provide the service to our clients, which is Capri and Highlander House. But we are graciously working with the city, and we are given the ability to work within the city, by the city. So whatever ultimately the city council, the attorneys, the alderman, whatever, they feel is best, we're happy to oblige. And I've done so from day one, day one. So I just wanted to add that.
Thank you. All right. Anyone else have any comments?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I'm going to... I am actually going to read from Mr. Nicholson, from Facebook. "I would like all his neighbors to hear it and understand who he really is. These arrogant slobs, especially Alderman Clifford and sneaky Bob Strauss, do not care what moms and dads and taxpayers and voters say. They are gross, inhumanly arrogant. They do not care what Payless citizens think. The only... They actually will dox you if you disagree. Clifford tried to get me... To get a private citizen fired from his... From this. A veteran, a Vietnam veteran, acting like Ho Chi Minh..." They are gross, inhumanly arrogant. They do not care what payless citizens think. The only, they actually will dox you if you disagree. Clifford tried to get me, to get a private citizen fired from this. A veteran, a Vietnam veteran, acting like Ho Chi Minh is the ultimate tragedy. See you next Tuesday. Tomorrow morning, I am taking the honor flight to Washington, D.C. When I get there, I am going to be looking up 65 names of fellows that were killed while I was with them. When I was in Vietnam, where that jerk decided he wanted to turn around and call me Ho Chi Minh, I've done everything I possibly could. I took one guy who was shot to hell, and I had to put his intestines back in him. And I got to live with all this kind of stuff, and I have, and I can do my job, and I can do it awful damn well.
I'd like to say one thing. We both served here. I served in two services. A lot of people don't know that. I was in the United States Marine Corps, '67, and I didn't have enough of that, and I joined the Army back in 1969. But he went to Vietnam. I was a phone call away. That's the difference. I looked up his service record, and for to be insulted or put in the same thing or the same hooch with Ho Chi Minh or any of them people or a Jane Fonda during that time or be spit on in an airport, no, that's the past, not now. But I'm gonna tell you about him. When he was the only, he's the only Vietnam veteran sitting here. We're both veterans, but he was a non. He was wounded three times. One Purple Heart, trench foot, diabetes, chronic kidney disease, five Agent Orange surgeries for cancer. Two times he fell in quicksand, was platoon tunnel rat, has been in more tunnels in Vietnam than anyone I know. He located an underground hospital, lost over 100 men in his platoon, 24 in one firefight, 45 wounded. He had put one Marine's intestines back in his body so he could be bandaged up, patrol the road daily because it was mine nightly, shot on patrol with a bullet burning his entire forearm and not hitting him. Pungy stake in his right hand, dysentery, not diarrhea. Six books written about the company of fellow Marines, 2nd Battalion, 5th Marines that he served with. Three were awarded the Congressional Medal of Honor. Are they Ho Chi Minh? I don't think so. And photo in Life Magazine article, 1966 invading the EMC shows Mr. McGovern writing point with Vietnam in the background. All I have to say is Marines never retreat, and he never retreated, and he doesn't deserve that remark. And I'm not usually, all the years I've been here, I've never respected, disrespected anybody. I don't like getting in arguments, but don't you dare bring my family, don't you dare write these things. I never tried to get anybody fired, and if you want, we'll all go down there and we'll go ask the head person down there. No, I asked a question. Did I inquire? Yes. What did I inquire? Is it appropriate to use company servers to spread these lies and deceit and accusations against my character and slander me that I'm taking bribes? That's legal, fellows.
All right.
And that's it. That's all I'm gonna say. And what I'm trying to say here is, and then we'll go get to this vote, is that it's no way to promote your cause. We got an alderman missing tonight. We'll see what happens when he gets back here, but for right now, it's over. That's it. We're moving on, okay? Thank you.
I left Okinawa aboard ship to Vietnam. On that day, there were 43 men in my platoon. 11 months later, I left Vietnam, me and four other people from my platoon. And he wants to call me a mocking name like that? Where are you, you son of a bitch?
Hey, come on.
Calm down, calm down.
All right, let's move along.
Move on with the agenda, Mayor, please.
Yes, move right along, okay? All right. An answer for?
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, I gotta make a motion to fund balance transfer of $2,543,881 to the capital improvement fund and $1,770,222 to the water and sewer capital fund.
Okay. Move by Alderman McGovern, seconded by Alderman Clifford. Discussion? This is in line with our policy every year to keep certain percentage in the general fund and the other, move the balance over. Rule call?
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
Alderman Begley.
Yes.
Alderman Bassow.
Aye.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
Okay, number 10, motion to approve a second amendment to site agreement number 231 with the American Tower to extend the current lease with a new lease expiration date of 8/31/2044 with an immediate land lease increase.
Move by Alderman McGovern, seconded by Alderman Clifford. Discussion? Rule call?
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman Bassow.
Aye.
Alderman Begley.
Yes.
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
I'd also like to make a motion to approve the Fourth Amendment to the lease agreement number 1905 with AT&amp;T to extend the current lease with a new lease expiration date of 4/30/2053 with an immediate rent increase.
Okay. Move by Alderman McGovern, seconded by Alderman Clifford. Discussion? Rule call?
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
Alderman Bassow.
Aye.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
Alderman Begley.
Yes.
Number 12, motion to approve the memorandum of the lease agreement number 1905 with AT&amp;T.
Okay. Move by Alderman McGovern, seconded by Alderman Clifford. Discussion? Rule call?
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
Alderman Begley.
Yes.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Alderman Bassow.
Aye.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Okay, number 13, motion to authorize the city attorney to draft an intergovernmental agreement providing a loan of up to $575,000 to the Payless Heights Public Library.
Move by Alderman McGovern, sir, second.
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Clifford.
Question, is this like with the remodeling project?
No, actually, let me address that. This is a situation where, since the second installment of the real estate taxes were late, many districts such as fire districts, school districts, and also in banking, we used to, from time to time, we have to give text anticipation warrants to these districts because their only source of income is the real estate taxes. That's the same situation here. Now, the county actually set up a fund for the other agencies, but the library is not, does not have the ability for their own taxing. They have to come through us, so that's why they can't borrow here, so that's why we're gonna lend them the money. So, that's where this comes in.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Rule call?
Alderman Begley.
Yes.
Alderman Bassow.
Aye.
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford.
Yes.
That's all I have, Mayor.
All right. Public safety? Alderman Bassow?
I have no report this evening, Mayor.
All right. Alderman Begley?
No report this evening, Mayor, thank you.
Planning and zoning? Alderman McGovern?
Okay, Mr. Mayor, number 14, I'd like to make a motion to direct the city attorney to draft an ordinance approving a zoning change from R1 residential to B business and granting a special use permit for the purpose of constructing and operating a special use municipal parking lot at 12303 South 71st Court, pin number 2430301001.
Move by Alderman McGovern, seconded by Alderman Key. Now, understanding this is just to draft the ordinance, this does not approve the parking lot itself. It has to come back to the next meeting for that.
Does it give Alderman McGrogan a chance to attend for the final vote, correct?
Right. Well, no. This motion, the motion to draft only needs a simple majority.
Simple majority, yeah.
The ultimate motion next week, if it goes that far, would be to, we'd need a majority to vote that. This is just to draft the ordinance itself, so.
Mr. Mayor, I, given that this is just a writing of the ordinance and we're not adopting it.
Right.
I would hate to see us vote this thing down and kill it right now because this affords us an opportunity to, if there's, if any of the eight aldermen still have questions about anything, if we need to address something, now is the time to address it. While this is being written up, we're not adopting it tonight, but if there's some small thing that we can do that we've missed or we're blind to, you know, we should look at those.
We can draft it as presented, and then we can make an amendment to it at the next meeting, if we want to change it one way or the other.
That's correct.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I think I want to speak though. I've received a lot of stuff, a lot of emails, a lot of communications regarding this parking lot, and, you know, I have, I have a number of misgivings, and I think I'd rather express them right now and get it out in the open. One thing that came up, I know that we got, I got something that was lengthy from Mr. Grosart, and one of the things that he suggested that we do as aldermen is talk to realtors about property value. At the last meeting, Alderman McGrogan brought up property values, and he suggested realtors that we might talk to. Ironically, the same night, two weeks ago, as that meeting, a realtor who lives in my ward and owns Reynolds Realty, Diane Reynolds, sent me an email, and, you know, and of course, property values are up and down, and you can't actually pinpoint percentage, you know, increases and decreases, but she indicated to me, and I wanted to share it with everybody, that one thing for sure, a parking lot in your backyard or next to your house is not a selling Whether your property goes, wherever your property values go from here, having a parking lot is not a selling point. I was looking at a map that I think Ken Bussey drew of our downtown, and our current parking lot, which is only 100 yards from the proposed parking lot, isn't even listed as a parking lot anymore on his drawing. It's a farmer's market slash special events lot. To me, it's still a parking lot. To me, it's 100 yards from what we're proposing. The farmer's market ends at 1:00 on every Wednesday during the summer. We don't have parking issues before 1:00 down Harlem Avenue, and so to start labeling it as a non-parking lot, as a special events site, I think, I think is a problem for me. Its location, just 100 yards from the proposed lot, and it's never, I've never seen it full, and to go ahead and build this one, that's a problem for me. But the biggest problem is that our residents who live in that area, they don't want it. Our city council listens to residents. I mean, that's why, that's why we don't have video gaming here, because all the towns around us have video gaming. We don't because our residents don't want it, and we listen to our residents. And the residents who live around this site, they don't want it. For whatever reason, on the other side of Harlem, on the west side of Harlem, the Franklin House lot apparently is well-received by the people over there, but this lot on 71st Court is not being well-received by the residents who live around there, and I think we need to respect that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to make a comment since the day I decided to run for this office and the various forums that we've been asked questions about our vision for Payless Heights. I've been consistent, and I want to reiterate some of those comments here tonight. I'm a firm believer in if you're not growing, you're dying, and Mr. Coogan made a number of comments in his statement that I agree with, that careful planning and development in the right way of our community is something that I'm all about. I think it's a, and I'm very conscious of the residents and their feelings towards this parking lot, and I've spoken to my fellow aldermen and mayor, we do listen. I feel that looking at this project as solely a parking lot is a myopic view. I think that this is unfortunately happening before development happens, but I think that this is a key part in developing what I view as the nexus of our downtown district, that 123rd and Harlem corner or center, is something that I've been consistent saying that I would like to see developed to look like a downtown Lagrange or a downtown Downers Grove. And I think that having additional parking is going to attract development that's going to be developed in the right way, which we have seen in our community, and it will bring in small businesses, and it will increase the property value because our downtown district will be a destination point like some of these other communities that I've mentioned. So, thank you.
Any other comments? Okay, rule call?
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman Violet.
No.
Alderman Begley.
Yes.
Alderman Bassow.
No.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Yes.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford.
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay. Any other things? Planning and zoning?
That's it. Recreation. Alderman Key.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to approve payment to Hacienna Landscaping in the amount of $19,461 for work completed at the Payless Pool.
Move by Alderman Key, seconded by Alderman Violet. Discussion? Rule call?
Alderman Begley.
Yes.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
Alderman Bassow.
Aye.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
Alderman McGovern.
Aye.
Then I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution of authorization for the ASLED grant program.
Move by Alderman Key, seconded by Alderman Violet. Discussion? All in favor? Rule call?
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman Begley.
Yes.
Alderman Bassow.
Aye.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
Then I'd like to make a motion to approve Upwind Design in the amount of $9,500 for the Payless Pool master plan and public engagement for the ASLED grant.
Move by Alderman Key, sir, second. Seconded by Alderman Violet.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
If I could just mention, the ASLED is open space and land acquisition and development that we've been fortunate enough to receive funds from that program that the state offers, and this one that we're going after is actually for the 2024 usage. We're opening a park this year, and next year we're gonna open up another park, and we've used ASLED in the past. It's a long method, you know, method of getting these grants, and so, you know, we're looking ahead several years to do this, but this one in particular is attractive because usually they cap them, but this one's a little more generous, so we're gonna benefit even more.
All right. Any other questions there? Rule call?
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Alderman Bassow.
Aye.
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman Begley.
Yes.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
Then I'd like to make a motion to approve the fifth payment to Georgia's Landscaping in the amount of $69,221.98 for work completed on the Misty Meadows Park project.
Move by Alderman Key, sir, second. Seconded by Alderman Violet. Discussion? Rule call?
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Alderman Bassow.
Aye.
Alderman Begley.
Yes.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman Violet.
And then finally, I'd like to make a motion to approve the city attorney to draft an ordinance amending the city code sections 3450 through 34.54 pertaining to the RAB, which is the Recreation Advisory Committee Board.
Move by Alderman Key, seconded by Alderman Violet. Discussion?
Yeah, could I just ask if something could be looked into just as an amendment to the ordinance? It doesn't have to be acted on, but on 34, just to get clarity on it, on 3451, it says the authority of the RAB shall be with the majority approval of the Recreation Committee, have the authority to propose rules of procedure governing its proceedings, and will conduct all of its proceedings in accordance with such rules. Can you get some clarity on that exactly? Can you just look at that later on during the course of the year?
I don't, I'll start off very simply. We just redid an ordinance, this very ordinance, six, seven years ago, I think it was 2015, and I still prefer that ordinance over what this project is here. This project, to me, makes me feel like there's something wrong somewhere. There's something wrong. I don't know if it's at the, I don't know if it's at the R and B board, I don't know if it's at Park District, I don't know if it's at the Rec Creation Committee, but as many times as I've read through this thing, I'm, I'm gonna just turn around and say personally, if you wanna agree to this ordinance, why don't you just close the R and B?
Okay, all right. Any other questions? Comments?
I would just say that, just as a comment, that I've been a part of REC board since I came on the council, and I know that Jeff and Matt spent a lot of ti, along with David, spent a lot of time on this, and I think that after meeting with some of the RAB board members, that we were able to address, I know at the last committee meeting, I asked to have about five different stanzas stricken from the ordinance, and I personally am satisfied at this point with the ordinance, and I think that the, and I, and I don't wanna speak without permit, you know, but I felt that the RAB members were, had come to a point where they were okay with it, so I, I do support the ordinance at this point, and I would like to move forward at some point soon so that we can not devote any more energy to this.
Okay. Any other questions?
Why does, why under the new ordinance, does everybody have to report to the REC committee?
Because we are the council members.
Yes, you are.
Right.
But you are not, you are not the REC department.
No, but I think our, our roles, elected officials, is to set policy for the city, and so I think that's our, our role, and I think we all try to work together to, to do that, and so I think we've all done fairly, we've, we've put a lot of, at this point, the whole council has put a lot into this along with the RAB members, and I just think that we're kinda spinning our wheels, so either we say yay or nay, and let's move on.
Well, as, and I just, I still, like I said, I can't, I cannot even figure out why, why does one paragraph ordinance, which was thirty-four fifty, I believe it was, all of a sudden now have to have A, B, C, and then they turn around and have to, have to have, if you read the first part of it, that was, that was ridiculous, and I really don't feel this is any better.
Well, this is the second time I've walked into a city council meeting with an ordinance suggestion that got voted unanimously in committee, and at some point, Alderman McGovern, you're gonna have to trust that the members of this committee have done their due diligence and worked on this and contributed to it and came to common ground, and so that's where we're at. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I still think there's something wrong between either the committee, the management, or the R and B board.
Well, if that, if that's true, Alderman, I'm wondering why in the last, because we've been actually discussing this at committee member, committee level for about nine months to a year, and not one of the four non-members of the, of the committee have ever called me and said, "What's going on?" All of a sudden now it's crucial, but no one, I mean, I'm available all the time, I'd be glad, I'll discuss it with anyone. I've spent over twenty hours in meetings and phone calls discussing this.
All right, what was the question?
Yep.
Rule call?
Alderman Begley.
Yes.
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
Alderman Bassow.
Aye.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman McGovern.
No.
Alderman Clifford.
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay.
And that concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
What was the construction, Alderman Clifford?
He answered it already, just to add that.
Rhodes.
Okay. Rhodes, um.
Your turn.
We got a motion to approve final payment to M&amp;J Asphalt for the 2021 Road Program in the amount of twenty-three thousand, one hundred and thirty-two dollars and fifty cents.
Moved by Alderman Clifford.
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Lewandowski, discussion? Rule call?
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
Alderman Begley.
Yes.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Alderman Bassow.
Aye.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Motion to approve payment to Lindell Brothers, Inc., for the 2022 Roads Program in the amount of three hundred and one thousand, four hundred and sixty-one dollars and forty-eight cents.
Moved by Alderman Clifford.
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Lewandowski, discussion? Rule call?
Alderman Bassow.
Aye.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
Alderman Begley.
Yes.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Alderman Bassow.
Aye.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye. Motion to approve payment to Lindell Brothers, Inc., for the 2022 Roads Program in the amount of three hundred and one thousand, four hundred and sixty-one dollars and forty-eight cents.
Moved by Alderman Clifford.
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Lewandowski, discussion? Rule call?
Alderman Bassow.
Aye.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman Begley.
Yes.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
Motion to approve payment to Lindell Brothers for asphalt patching in Gulfview Lane East of Oak Park Avenue in the amount of fifteen thousand, eight hundred and twenty-five dollars.
Moved by Alderman Clifford, sir seconded by Alderman Lewandowski.
There's a second by Alderman Lewandowski.
I thought so. Discussion? Rule call?
Alderman Begley.
Yes.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
Alderman Bassow.
Aye.
And lastly, motion to approve payment to Morris Engineering for engineering services for various projects throughout the city for the amount of twenty-one thousand, twenty-eight dollars and eighty cents.
moved by Alderman Clifford, seconded by Alderman Lewandowski, discussion? Rule call?
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Alderman Begley.
Yes.
Alderman Bassow.
Aye.
And side information, the REC Senate should hopefully be, start working at REC within the next few weeks, have it installed. We also are looking at the possibility of five areas in the city where these landscape islands are in the middle, like Colvin said, that are causing some issues, thought that over the Public REC Department to come up with a, a plan of how we can address these or remove these in cost-efficient manner and over a five-year program. It is allowable to use MFT and road funds to do this improvement. There is some in the first ward, some in the second ward, some in the third ward, about five altogether, and that'll be discussed at the next roads and construction meeting. That's it.